He said they probably wouldn't announce it.
I'd like to call tonight's meeting in order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll the ball, please. Mr. Hales?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Burt?
Yes.
Dr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Burt?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
We need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Dr. Mary and second please. Mr. Burt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no comments from the public this evening. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Holmes, second. Ms. Burt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And our opinion trade board?
All right. Good afternoon. I'll try to make this quick. Really want to point out to this month is we had two changes to our projections from what I had presented in December. The first was the High Needs Fund. That's the money that reimburses us for the students that cost three times as much as an average amount. The state, so they had $15 million shortfall in that fund, which to us, our share of that 15 million shortfall is 600,000. So that's 600,000 less we'll receive this year than we were planning on. If you remember, our budget was kind of close when I brought you the December revisions. Pretty much all of our expenditures are contracted for already, you know, salaries, what we're purchasing. So it does, it's hard to shift mid-year, but I still think this year will come out positive because property taxes are coming in higher than normal. So if that holds, that should make up that $600,000 shortfall. The bigger one is future related. It is for the state adequacy target is for our formula. For, you know, about 12 months now, the state was saying that was going to be 71.50 a student. Sorry. And it is actually going to be 6,700 next year now. So that's quite a reduction. $400 a student to us would be 6 million, but we were using a slightly lower number. So it worked out to 4 million less than, you know, what I was forecasting, not just next year, but every year after that. So that's going to take some time sitting down, like, what can we do with raises now? What is the speed for new programs? And I don't know, maybe the state guidance will change. Last Thursday, I was on a call with the state budget director and his sentiment was basically that number is going to stay flat unless the legislator does something. But I just wanted to say, I mean, that's how quickly it can change, but we do forecast the future and we're working on it now. So especially with the big change, we do have some time to work through it.
Just real quick while Brian's talking about that, in reference to the SAT, that adequacy target, that's been conversationally shared that we should expect these kind of two phases of that going up for the better part of three years now. So to enter into this point where that SAT now is not going to go up, you know, obviously affects us, but Brian has done a nice job and Jeff Moore Pryor is safeguarding a little bit against that. But that's going to hit other districts who have budgeted around that. More have already gone into their negotiations for multi-year agreements on the premise that that's going to be used to offset some of these other changes. So that's a big bit of news.
Yeah, we were fortunate to get the timing. I mean, the earlier you get bad news, the better, right? Because you plan on it. We'd already entered negotiations with those numbers. Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, Brian.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions or?
I fully funded with the other guy, Ron Horn.
I know, yeah.
I need a motion to approve the opinion trade board.
I said Ron. Sorry.
You said, you said, yeah.
As a reporter.
I need a motion to approve the opinion trade board, please.
Motion.
Mr. Pratt, second. Ms. Burt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Old business, Dr. Myers?
Thank you. Just one item under old business, under facility planning. Jeremy Moore is going to present the results of the lawn mowing service bid. Quick reminder, this is for the other half of the district. We just went into disagreement last year and so Jeremy, I'll pass it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Myers and members of the board. As Dr. Myers said, we are, we, the board approved last year half of the lawn mowing services to Archway Lawn Services. That's who we currently have. We were finishing the last year, the five-year for 17 locations, predominantly the north side of the district and our auxiliary sites. So we began advertising for the project or the contract work in January. Had a pre-bid opening on January 30th. Had six interested vendors that picked up the project manuals for the, for the contract. And ultimately on February 6th, we had three bids, three bids that came in to, to that, to that bid opening. If you can direct attention to the memo that is in the packet there. The vendors were Broyles, Nelson and Archway. Of those three vendors, we are making the recommendation for lawn services to be awarded to Nelson Lawn Services for 111,566. That is based on a recommendation that, that they are the most responsible of the bidders. Have had previous experience with, with other bidder and based on some reference checks and even some of the previous experiences with our directors, with, with the work with that particular bidder, felt this was the, the most responsible recommendation to bring forth to the board for this evening.
You said that we had experience with some of the other bidders in the past?
We have, yes. And based on current reference checks that were conducted by our director and then even personal experiences, I should say professional experiences with our directors. The quality consistency of the work was just not quite there.
Okay. Let me see, that's $31,000 difference, but we think there's, there's value in there?
Absolutely, yep. Recommendations for Nelson Land Service, like I said, we, our lawn service was all very, very good, very positive. Work with districts local to us as well. And then our current contractor service servicing the other half of the district is Archway, who's been a longtime contractor with the district as well.
Any other questions?
I have more. I assume the volume isn't going to be too much for Nelson. I can assume the volume of, of.
No, and that is something that within, yeah, within the bidding packets that they present, we, they have to indicate what other work they have in the area, how much capacity that they have. And that is something that Mr. Kitson also vetted out when we're making this whole call, so, yeah.
Well, anyways, if there's no more questions, I need a motion to approve Nelson's lawn mowing recommendations. Mr. Holmes, second. Ms. Burt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? New business, Dr. Myers?
Thank you. First item on the new business, the elementary ELA curriculum. Jen Waters is here and Jen's going to also introduce Laura. So Jen's going to walk us through the curriculum recommendation and packet along with Laura and we'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. I want to introduce Laura Ermeling. She is our K-5 Curriculum Coordinator for ELA. She's done a really wonderful job facilitating this whole process, which I guess really actually started last year. Towards the end of the year, they've done a really, really thorough review of our curriculum, made sure that everything is connected to the learning standards for the state and also a really thorough job of vetting out materials, which is so important. So it's been a long time since we've done a replacement. I think we're going on 10 years about. So our teachers are really ready for it and I, I don't think I've ever heard a big group of teachers so excited about getting new materials. And many of them have used those in their classrooms and anecdotally, we have just gotten such great feedback. So I will turn it over to you and you can kind of talk a little bit about the process and the materials.
Okay. Like Jen said, my name is Laura Ermeling. I am here tonight representing the elementary teachers. I'm excited to be here. I'm kind of sad that there's nobody else here with me though. They were all planning on being here in person and obviously the best decision was for them to stay home. So I'm really hoping that most of the teachers that were part of this process have tuned in to watch this live stream virtually. So my job here tonight is to bring forth a proposal to you for the elementary ELA curriculum adoption beginning in the next school year, the '25, '26 school year. Before I set forth a recommendation that the team and the committee has come to, I just want to introduce you, and again, they're not here in person, but I'm going to introduce you to the teachers that were part of this process. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the process that we went through to get to the recommendation that we are going to put forth. I say we, we're going to pretend that they're all here with me. Okay, so the following two slides contain the names of the teachers who were part of the K-5 ELA Curriculum Study and Review Team. And it is important to note, this is the K-2 teachers and the next slide has the 3 through 5 teachers on it. It's important to note that all 16 of our elementary schools were represented in this group of teachers. They have a range of experience in years. All of these teachers have some sort of letters training coming into this process. That is an important initiative for, for our district and so we wanted to keep that in mind, that expertise these teachers are bringing to the table in terms of the science of reading and the research surrounding it. And it's also important to note that we have grade level teachers on this team, but we also had special education teachers as part of this process. We had an ELD specialist as part of this process and several of our instructional coaches were part of these cohorts of teachers. That's the 3, 5 teachers. So this, the next couple of slides are going to kind of take you through the process that we have been going through this year. And like Jen said, it really even kind of started even last year when I took this position on. So this team of teachers has been meeting all year and their goals are kind of threefold, if you will. One of our goals during this whole process was to review the literacy materials that are on Dusty's approved list of vendors for comprehensive literacy instruction. Those materials, as the state's list stands right now, were Wonders, Benchmark Advance and Amplify CKLA. So our team met and reviewed all three of those state-approved materials. Our big important goal for this work was to find a resource that was on that state's approved list that will be able to take the place of ReadyGen, which is our current ELA resource right now. The one that Jen was talking about has been our resource for about 10 years. And also that is going to work in conjunction with 95% Phonics Core program, which you are familiar with, is being utilized in all of our K-5 classrooms this year. It was in K-3 classrooms prior to this year and K-5 across the board. So that was also very important to us when making this recommendation. A little bit more about the process, because we had so many teachers involved, we have so many elementary schools, we had to break our teachers into two cohorts of K-2 and 3, 5. And they met monthly to examine all three of the state's approved resources. We also had frequent check-ins and, and virtual meetings and actual in-person meetings with the vendors to help provide insight into this process and answer any questions that we had. Each month, all of the team members completed individual surveys and they provided additional feedback for this decision-making process. And the teams worked diligently and efficiently to narrow the choices from three down to two. And once they were able to narrow it from three down to two resources, then they were, they used two different rubrics to measure both of those resources. So we use the Reading League rubric and the Knowledge Matters rubric. And the two resources that we narrowed down to were Benchmark Advance and Amplify CKLA. This slide just contains links to both of the rubrics for your information. Again, the Reading League rubric and the Knowledge Matters review tool were used in this decision-making process. Some other things to note that happened as part of this process were some of our team members, myself included, as well as Dr. Boatman, Mrs. Darrell, who is our ELA Literacy Facilitator, and some of the team members were able to go on some learning walks in a couple of other districts. We were able to go to Parkway to see Benchmark Advance in action and we were able to go to Melville School District to see Amplify CKLA. We were able to see most grade levels on those learning walks and be able to interact with students and teachers. We were also able to interact with building and district leadership on those learning walks as well to gather insight on how their implementations were going and to ask questions. I am going to kind of summarize what those team members took away from that experience. It was noted that it was a very positive experience when we saw Amplify CKLA in Melville School District. We could sense enjoyment and engagement in the classrooms. We were able to go into multiple classrooms at the same grade level and we were able to see the same content being taught, but teachers' craft and autonomy being respected with that resource. And in one first grade classroom in particular, they were reading a text about ancient Mesopotamia and about how water impacts where and how people live. And the students were so excited, they were practically in the teacher's lap during this read aloud. And that's the engagement and enthusiasm and excitement we want to see in our students in Fort Zumwalt. Another thing that our team members were able to do is they were able to have digital access to both Benchmark and Amplify CKLA to further our review process and they were able to try a few lessons in their classroom. And the teacher that was going to be here tonight to do this part of the presentation is one of our first grade teachers and I don't want to botch her words, so I am going to read to you her, a quote from her about how trying some of those lessons specific to Amplify CKLA went in her first grade classroom. She said, "Recently, I had the opportunity to implement a few lessons from Amplify CKLA. The astronomy lessons from CKLA were particularly exciting. The engaging multimedia resources and hands-on activities sparked a contagious enthusiasm among my students who eagerly participated in discussions about planets and the solar system using vocabulary that surpassed anything we've encountered in previous years. We saw a remarkable increase in student engagement with this resource. Students were not only excited to learn, but they were actively involved, asking questions and collaborating with peers. The integration of opinion writing allowed them to express their newfound knowledge confidently, resulting in writing that has, that was more articulate and vocabulary-rich than ever before." And that was, again, from a first grade teacher that has almost 20 years of experience in our district and has taught using several of the other ELA resources that we have had over the last 20 years. The end product of our process that we have been going through was a vote in January. And our teams, both cohorts, K-2 and 3, 5, were able to come to a unanimous decision to move forward with an adoption and implementation of Amplify CKLA in grades K through 5. I do want to share with you the summary of important points because these are some of the most important reasons why the team came to this unanimous decision. They feel strongly that it offers students access to complex texts that build knowledge across grades K through 5. There is a clear standards alignment in all domains, reading, writing, language, speaking and listening. All of those standards are present throughout. It is easily paired with 95% Phonics Core program, which I made mention at the very beginning was one of the end goals of this, to have a new resource that also complements the resource that we are going to continue to use. And that resource is what we are using to teach foundational literacy standards. It has an integrated literacy block where students engage in read-alouds, partner reads, independent reading, discussions and written tasks. It is built upon the knowledge that teachers are gaining through letters training, which again, is a priority in our district that we made mention to earlier. It allows for easy preparation and planning on the side of the teacher and it also allows for teacher creativity and craft to come through. This slide has the Elementary ELA Curriculum Guide attached to it, which was previously shared with you. Basically what you'll see in that curriculum guide is a standards alignment between the Missouri learning standards that were previously used before the 2017, 2018 school year and the Missouri grade level expectations, which we are currently operating under in the state of Missouri. You're also going to see a year at a glance section that outlines all the big ideas, the overall learning outcomes, the standards taught, the standards assessed and the anchor tasks for each one of Amplify CKLA's units slash domains. So after careful and thoughtful consideration and a unanimous decision by the review team, we are asking tonight for your approval of the Elementary ELA Curriculum Guide, which is linked here and was also on the slide before this. Amplify CKLA, the third edition in grades K through 5 and Amplify CKLA decodable texts in grades K through 2. Are there any questions?
Any questions? If not, I need a motion to approve the Elementary ELA curriculum as presented. Ms. Burt, second. Dr. Mary and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, JB Meddy has the next few, in fact, is here to go over some information about the E-Rate program purchasing and then later the computer vendor recommendations. So JB, go ahead.
All right. Thank you and good evening, everyone. Start with E-Rate purchases. These are ones that we get funded through E-Rate, which is roughly a 50% discount back to us later after the purchase. We try to take advantage of those funds any way we can. Their, their options and opportunities are limited, so we work with what we can. First one we have up tonight is the renewal of, renewal of our yearly firewall maintenance and license agreement. We have to have that in order to keep the firewall in place, which is a pretty big security deal. So we'd like to continue with that one. Put that out to bid, received a bid from Provision Data Solutions, which is the partner we currently work with. We've had no issues with them. This is just a license renewal, so there's no work necessary. It's really just getting a key in there and we continue to have support on the device. One additional year with them is $66,930. We would get a refund back from them later in the year after everything's processed.
Questions? If not, any in a motion to approve the 2025, 2016 reprogram maintenance and license agreement? All right. Mr. Christopher, Mr. Holmes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, next one up, also on E-Rate, this is for UPS's, the battery backups. We try to replace about a quarter of our battery backups each year. This allows us to keep operating in the event of a power outage, so our Wi-Fi continues to work. As long as charter doesn't go down, we're able to continue operating in the classrooms and have phones and all that kind of stuff. So we try to keep those up because batteries go bad over time. We're looking at a quarter, which would be the north quarter of the district this year. Put that out to bid, had two vendors respond. Winning vendor was N1C through Riverside Technologies, same vendor we used last year. They did a great job. They came in, they did all of the work. They pulled the old equipment out of service for us. Really, I don't have any negatives to offer on that one. Total cost here is $89,517.39, which is right in line with what we had estimated. And again, this is E-Rate, so we'd get about 50% back later in the year.
Any questions? I need a motion to approve the 2025, 2016 rate program UPS battery backup units reimbursement recommendations. Mr. Christopher, second. Mr. Holmes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Last thing I have for you this evening is device refresh. This is our computers, Chromebooks, iPads, those kind of things that we replace. I'm not going to go into a whole bunch of detail here because you've got the information in front of you and hopefully you've had a chance to read through that. I will just point out a couple of things. The Chromebooks, this allows us to keep moving every year with handing out new devices to sixth graders and ninth graders as they come into those buildings. They keep those for the three or four years that they're in those schools. This year, the, the low-cost bidder, what we would recommend is Trafara. What's unique about them is that we already work with them on warranty parts and they are offering extra supply stock of spares on the shelf, 3%. So what we order, 3% of that, they will give us extra to have on our shelf so we can immediately turn things around and have faster response time for our students. So I wanted to point that out because I think that's a really big deal for us to improve customer service. The other thing I will point out on the Windows devices, we're already seeing a pretty marked increase across the board. Every vendor that I've talked to is struggling to try and get prices down on their Windows devices. Hit pretty quick and I wasn't quite anticipating it, but I also don't see them going down anytime in the near future. So with that in mind, I've got a lot of different categories here. From my side, I don't have to have those individually. I leave that on how you guys would want to approve it. I would be fine with just a single approval. Really quick, there is one line item we are, I'm recommending that we do not offer to any vendor because we demoed units from everybody that submitted and none of them worked the way that we anticipated them to. So I want to go back to the drawing board with the team, make sure we get a device that actually functions the way we expect it to, put that back out to bid and come back to you guys with that.
No. Any question? I need a motion to approve the computer vendor recommendation as presented. Mr. Holmes, second. Mr. George, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, everyone.
Next item and last item on our new business is the resolution to proceed with our general obligation improvement bond series. Brian Woodell's going to go over this. Just want to take a minute also to point out Lorenzo Boyd from Steeple is here, mainly to keep in touch, but also to walk through the process. So Lorenzo, if at any point anything you want to add to it, feel free to jump in and otherwise, Brian, it's all yours.
All right. So this is the resolution to essentially issue the rest of the bond approved back in '21, '22. So the $125 million, we've already received 75 million, spent a lot of it. The what's left will probably be spent over the summer, so we needed more to keep going with the project. And it made sense at this point to release the remaining $50 million. But of course, before we start, we need the board's approval. I haven't the exact date that we're going to release it, but our plan is to release it before the April elections and this was part of Steeple Lorenzo's great advice and that was after those elections, there's probably a good chance a lot of places are going to be issuing bonds. So if we get in early, we're probably going to get the better pricing.
Yeah, we're going to actually come back to the, to the next board meeting, March 17th, get the approval of parameters resolution, what we plan to do is price the bonds on March 26th. And then that's when the final interest rates and terms will be set. And then on April 8th, this district will have their funds in hand and that happens to be the day of the election. The most important thing is March 26th. So it's like I was telling Brian, I said I think we want to get in ahead of the April elections because once you get towards the end of April, there's going to be a lot of competition for bonds out there and I want to get this priced sooner rather than later. And this transaction is going to be a good one just because it's going to be short. It's not going to be your typical 20 years. We have a lot of room, so we're going to have this bond issue be a short eight-year bond issue, even though we're doing 50 million. So we're going to be able to advertise it a lot quicker than we had in the past just because of the reserves that we have in place right now.
I think that March meeting will have more, you know, not exact numbers, I don't think, but much closer to what you think the interest rate will be at the return.
Any questions? I need a motion to approve the resolution to proceed a general combination improvement bond series, 2025 as presented. Mr. Christopher, second. Mr. Pratt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. The comments from the board, I'll start with you, Mr. Pratt.
Sure. Sure. First of all, a thank you to the teachers that were involved in the Elementary ELA curriculum. Over your own process, Ms. Moore?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So thank you to them. Also, something I have in hand here, we have a student council person from East High School. Anne St. Gail is one of five recipients of a national scholarship. It's a $5,000 award. This is based off the student council. She's the president of these, I should have started with that, my apologies. But a $5,000 award for the National Association of Student Council recognizes students who embody the organization's core tenets of leadership development, service to the community, amplifying student voice and active engagement. So a big congratulations.
I also want to say thank you to the teachers and all the work that you guys put into that excellent presentation. I also want to say thank you to everyone who's prepared the schools, hopefully for us to be able to have school eventually. Again, maybe...
I tell you, you didn't say tomorrow.
I don't know what's going to happen, so of course, we want to make sure everyone's safe. And then I have exciting news about West High's cybersecurity challenge team. They were one of the only 11 who qualified to compete in the in-person finals for the Missouri High School Challenge scheduled for this week in Columbia. Hopefully, they get there. Teams from across the state competing virtually in preliminary round, they are presented with a series of real-world scenarios involving network defense, ethical hacking, and security protocol analysis. The in-person competition will offer even more real-world challenges. Good luck. Thank you.
Dr. Mary?
Thank you. I obviously share all the sentiments put forth before, thanking all the people planning and working with the weather and the English curriculum. I also want to point out one of our staff members, Dr. Pat Brown, got a big award from the local business community. He was named the, let me get this correct, the Commerce, O'Fallon Chamber of Commerce Industries Persons of the Year. So that's pretty exciting, that's all his work he does with STEAM and career tech ed, and I know I've worked with him over the years as well, and can certainly see why they chose him. He does a great job, and we're lucky to have him, so that's exciting. Also, I want to thank Laura Wagner for keeping us up to date on the good things going on with our folks, so don't want to forget to thank you two for what you do, so, thanks.
Mr. George?
Okay. We just found out this afternoon that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education announced that East High is among 25 schools and school districts recognized as 2025 Missouri Purple Star Schools. The designation is awarded to recognize schools and districts that have demonstrated a major commitment to students and families connected to the United States Armed Forces. DSE's hosting an award ceremony in the spring, so more information will be available in a couple weeks. I also have liked to ask that you call your legislators. Missouri is one of 17 states that have filed to attack 504 plans, and that would be very detrimental to our students that need those plans. I would encourage you to call your legislators, and while you're, got them on the phone, ask them to fully fund the foundation formula, because they were talking about not doing that, and ask them not to support vouchers either, because that's pilfering from the poor to give to the rich. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mr. Christopher?
All right. Yeah, echo all the thanks that everybody else said, also, thanks to JB for doing all the hard work on the computers. Now, that's a massive undertaking. Have one thing here, National School Resource Officer Day was on Saturday, so just want to take a minute to thank all our partners at O'Fallon, St. Peters, and St. Charles County, and each one of our SROs within our district that do a great job. They're there to build relationships with kids, they're to protect and serve, and I think we're fortunate to have them wherever we have the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Well, first, I guess, I just repeat the same sentiment, thank you to everybody for all you do, had me and JB, Laura, and all the staff that did all the hard work on the ELA, the new ELA curriculum. So I have a shout-out to the North Girls Swim and Dive Team, they are the new GAC South Division champs, and also congratulations to the South Girls Swim and Dive Team, they're the GAC North Central champs. Wish both of them the best of luck as the more competitors at state this weekend. So they have state swim this weekend, so if anybody's out there and looking for something to do, want to brave the elements, we'd love to see you down there supporting our North Girls or South Girls.
Thank you.
Same with the ELA, we've needed this for a long time, and I'm really excited, because it's going to pair together with what we're doing so well. So thank you to everybody, and if anybody's watching it, I know you guys put a lot in for that. Last month, we shared that donations were being collected for our annual prom boutique, which is held at Hope High School. It allows students to get what they need for the big night for your charge. Thanks to our community, more than 500 dresses were donated, along with several racks of suits, jackets, and pants. There was also shoes, accessories available for all. During its four-hour run, 47 dresses, eight suits, three pairs of pants, nine jackets, 13 dress shirts, 21 ties, and 14 pairs of shoes left the boutique February 7th. A special thank you to the team of staff who volunteers to make this event a reality. Awesome. Yeah. All right, with that, this concludes our agenda, and we will not return to open session after closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session in accordance with RM SO 610021 to discuss the approval of the minutes from the January 21st, 2025 closed session meeting, hiring, firing, promotion, personnel, and legal matters.
Mr. Christopher, second, Mr. Pratt, your call, please, Ms. Martin? Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fern? Yes. Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Christopher?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.